Good evening and welcome to the Merrimack School Board meeting tonight, May 1st, 2017. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Master Cola Elementary did a great job with the pledge, as always. So we just have a little bit of business to do, but be right with you. So after this, we have public participation. If anyone wanted to speak, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. If you're a student, just state your name and grade. Seeing none, we're going to close public participation. And the highlight of our night is item number three. We're going to focus on the student voice and mindset at James Master Cola Elementary School. And I will give the floor to Emily Carter if you'd like to introduce your team.
Good evening, it's wonderful to be here. I'm Emily Carter, the principal of Master Cola Elementary School. And this is Michelle Romaine, principal-elect of Master Cola Elementary School. And as we go through the presentation, we will have somebody introduce all of our helpers here this evening. Tonight, we're going to share just a little bit about how the MES community has been encouraging student voice and exploration through the learning process. There were several professional development experiences that led us to choose the topic of mindset as our overarching theme for this school year. The first was the past two years' August Academy, where we focused on inquiry-based learning and then shifting our current instructional practices that sometimes challenged our practical, theoretical, and professional thinking. Questions posed during our professional time together has helped the MES community to reflect on our current and past instructional practices and to shift together towards this new instructional model. At the building level, our core leadership team read several articles about mindset and also this book, "Mindset: The New Psychology of Success," by Carol Dweck. Our art teacher this year, Sue Boziak, actually led a book study on mindset for all staff who were interested in attending. And then last spring, several principals in the district were fortunate enough to attend a mindset conference, and Carol Dweck was actually the keynote speaker at that. It was really wonderful. This year, our core team, which is our building leadership team, challenged ourselves, the staff, and the students to think about how we might make a shift in our mindset, to help us take more risks, and to be open to others' opinions, even though they may be very different from our own. As a result, our PBIS committee chose mindset for our overarching theme at Master Cola. And Kate Harrington, to my right, our school counselor and also our PBIS facilitator, will share how we introduced the topic and grew this idea throughout the school year. Kate?
Good evening. As Emily mentioned, I'm her school counselor here at Master Cola, and I'm really excited for you to see how our school has incorporated mindset throughout the year. It's been really neat to see how our students have embraced the idea of mindset, and also our educators have really inspired the kids with changing the way that they think and being able to think more positively, having grace for ourselves and forgiveness, and really seeing every opportunity as a chance to learn and grow. So we're going to just give you guys a little bit of information about what mindset is. And so my friend Ian is going to give a nice definition for us on what fixed mindset is and what growth mindset is.
Um, so basically, um, how I think about it is, um, growth mindset is like a rubber band because you're always willing to grow your mind and stretch it out. And then fixed mindset is like a house because a house is can't move and they're not willing to change how they think. And it's stuck to the ground and it can't move.
Thanks, Ian. And so now our students actually have, they're going to show you an opportunity, they're going to sort through some attitudes and belief systems and show you if they fall under fixed or mindset, fixed or growth mindset. So we have Gigi, and she has a picture she's holding for you, and she's going to explain a little bit about this activity.
It's sort of like a test. It's sorting fixed mindset and growth mindset into two different piles. Mary Ann will be fixed mindset, black and white. Like, "I can't do this." And then Tegan will be growth mindset, colorful. With time and effort, I know I can do it.
So what is "I give up"?
I give up, goes Mary Ann, who is fixed mindset.
What is "This may take some time and effort"?
Tegan is growth mindset.
Um, what is "This is too hard"?
Fixed mindset.
Um, what is "I'll use some of the strategies I've learned"?
Growth mindset.
What is "It's good enough"?
Fixed mindset.
What is "Is this really my best work"?
Growth mindset.
Um, um, so we're going to ask you, what do you think is "I can't make this any better"?
Are you asking us?
Yeah.
Okay, I, my vote's fixed. What do you guys think?
Fixed.
We say fixed.
Yeah.
Oh, we passed.
Correct.
All right.
What is "I can always improve, I'll keep trying"?
Growth.
I feel, we think growth. Are we right? All right, got a hundred.
Ten out of ten.
All right, thank you.
Nice job, guys, thank you. So now, our next slide, it's going to show you, we focused on six mindset shifts throughout the year. So for about six weeks in our announcements, we would focus on what the fixed mindset was. And we would say, so instead of saying "this," we say, so you'll see, for instance, our first one. So Tegan and Mary Ann are going to help me out. Tegan's going to be our, stay with our growth mindset, and Mary Ann's going to be our fix. So Mary Ann, instead of saying-
"I made a mistake."
We say-
"Mistakes help me learn."
Instead of saying-
"I give up."
We say-
"Let me try again."
Instead of saying-
"I'll never be that smart."
We say-
"I will learn how to do this."
Instead of saying-
"This is too hard."
We say-
"This may take some time and effort."
Instead of saying-
"My friend can do this, but I can't."
We say-
"I can learn from my friend how to do this."
Instead of saying-
"It's good enough."
We say-
"Is it really my best work"?
Nice, nice job. So it's been really powerful to see how the kids have embraced the change in their thinking and how they really have encouraged each other in changing their thinking, just the power that comes with that. And we've talked a lot about how the way that we think affects the way that we feel and the way that we act. And so it's really shown them that they are capable of learning and achieving a lot more than they think they might be sometimes. So our next slide is going to show you, for our first mindset shift, we focused on mistakes. And something that came up during our time this summer when we were meeting as a committee for PBIS was, oftentimes, I see students that come to my office that really wrestle with making mistakes. And sometimes, they're very tiny mistakes that should be something that they could say, "Okay, I made a mistake and I can move on," but they would get fixated on that mistake. And we really wanted to build resiliency in our students and try to help them learn that when we make a mistake, it's a chance for us to learn what we did wrong and how to grow from that. And so it's, again, changing that mindset and that thinking. So this book is about a girl, and we actually don't learn her name for a while. She's the girl who never made mistakes. And she's followed around by the paparazzi. She's the perfect sibling, she's the perfect sister, she's a dedicated student, she does all of her chores, she does everything right. And she starts to feel the pressure of that on her, until finally, it builds and she makes her first mistake. And she actually learns to laugh along with other people at herself as she makes this mistake, and she finds freedom in that, and she learns that we all learn from mistakes that we make. So our next slide's going to show you, it's a little clip that we had a chance to do at the beginning of the school year. Our PBIS team got to take this book and make it into a skit. And so we got to teach the kids a little bit about mistakes and kick off our year with our new slogan that we came up with.
This school year, you're going to hear about ways that we can change our minds and the way that we think, to think more positively. So we're going to think about things like mistakes in a positive way and say, "It's okay, I learned something from that, and I grew from that." And we're going to have those ways to think differently and be less hard on ourselves because it'll make us feel happier, okay? So I'm going to ask us if we can memorize the new slogan here at MES. Are you ready?
At MES, we are the best we can be. Think positively and follow the big green.
Nice job, boys and girls.
And so every day, that's how we start our day off with our announcements, and then we talk about whatever our mindset shift is that falls in that six-week period. So it's been really cool to see that. What we're going to have for our next slide is something called "Brainology." And this was a chance, we've talked a lot about our brains this year in my lessons, I've been able to go into the classrooms to teach kids about how our brain works and how the mindset shift happens in our brain. So with me tonight, I have two friends. I'll let them introduce themselves, and we're going to learn a little bit about our brain.
So I'm Nick, and I'm going to be talking about the brain and the different parts of it that help you change your mindset or will make your mindset stay fixed. First is the thinking part of your brain, the prefrontal cortex, which is about this part of your brain, the very front. That- That, the thinking part of your brain is what will change your mindset into different mindsets, from good to bad mindsets. And gives, and helps you think about what you do each day. And the next part is your amygdala, which is right behind your ear. It's around this area, the brain. And it's what gives you the fixed mindset when something happens that is not in your comfort zone. And when these things happen, it sets off your amygdala, which is why you want to try and have a good mindset at these times because it's going to keep your mindset fixed on the way it is. And it will cause a fight, flight, or freeze reaction where if we were frightened, we'd do one of the three things. Fight, which is just how it sounds, you'd attack whatever was scaring you. Flight, which is to run away, or freeze, which is to stand perfectly still. We, we developed this part of the brain to work this way when there were things that would hunt us in the days when we had cavemen. But we don't have any of those threats today. And we, but we still have that part of the brain that keep, and they help keep us safe. And it also will help us with the things that make us worried or mad. So that's why you want to change your mindset before your amygdala responds to any situation that worries you or makes you feel like you're in danger. Like, a mindset I've had this year is when I was asked to write, I first thought, "Writing is hard, I don't like to do it." And I tried using an AlphaSmart and it helped me. And now when I write, I think about trying my best, and it's still hard for me, but I do it.
Nice job, thank you, Nick.
So, my name is Parker, and unlike Nick, I'm going to be talking about what happens inside the brain from the, because of the neuron. This is a neuron, but it's a million times its size. This is a lot smaller. This definitely can't fit in your head. But anyways, neurons send messages throughout your brain, throughout your brain, to show you that I can do this. And you can form neurons, new neurons, by challenging yourself or learning new things. So like, say you're a baby. The one thing you learn from a baby to an adult is simply how to walk. So when you're first a baby, it's kind of hard. But once you start trying, you get a new, you create nerves in your brain that tell you, "Hey, I can do this," but it's not as strong. It's as small as a piece of thread. But it keeps going and going and growing and growing, and soon, it becomes a bit bigger and a bit stronger, like a piece of floss. And after more and more years, it gets bigger and stronger and grows more, and it turns into a piece of yarn, but not literally, that'd be weird. And what happens is it'll keep growing and growing, and once, say, you're about 10, somewhere around that age, it's probably, it should be as strong as a rope. You know how to do it, it's as simple as simple. And another way, the easiest time to learn how to do all that stuff is through your magic decade, the first 10 years of your life. From when you're born to the first age to your 10th age, fourth grade, is the easiest part, you can learn new stuff and get neurons easier. So say you're about 25, you should probably be a bit jealous because you've already passed your magic decade.
We've passed many magic decades at the table.
But unlike me and probably some of the third graders, we're still like eight, nine, or 10, so we're still in that. So we can still try before we get to 25. Or 11. Changing your mindset can grow your brain, can grow your brain through your magic decade, so you will be so good at doing it, and your mindset will be stuck. But if you don't, it could get a little growth, which is not good. And for me, I have an example, because at the beginning of the year, our class does a lot of stuff called STEM projects, and they were super challenging and really hard because you have to think on the spot, you have to work with people, and some people aren't the best or easiest to work with. Like, say your friend, he's really good at Foursquare. Then you have another friend, and he's like the mathematical kid in your class or maybe your whole grade, which would be kind of cool. But they don't work together as well. So it's your first time doing it, and so you pick partners, and it's going to be challenging. But over the years of doing it, and you learn how to do it, and you know what's coming, you're going to learn, "I should stick with these guys because I know how to interact with them, and I know that we'll have at least some close ideas, and it's going to be a lot easier instead of working with Mr. Foursquare, who's thinking, 'Hey, we should make it so the ball goes to two.'" And it's easier because you're not afraid to like go ahead and speak out and make a mistake because you're probably going to make a mistake at least every once or twice in a STEM project because it's really hard to just leap forward and say this because you have to agree with everyone, and you have to know what you're going to do because you have certain materials, certain jobs, certain tasks, and it can be really hard. But it can get easier, and when it's easier to do it, and you have a good growth mindset, it can be a lot of fun.
That's all I have to say.
So now we are going to hear a little bit from Mrs. Terrio, Kathy Terrio, in her class. She did an amazing job this year of incorporating mindset lessons into her classroom, and she had a chance to share with her students on a personal level some information about how she has been incorporating growth mindset into her own personal life and help her students realize that everyone wrestles with our mindset.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Kathleen Terrio, I'm at James Master Cola Elementary. This year, I presently teach Grade III. I've taught in this district for over 20 years, and I was asked to share with you some of my professional and personal takeaways from the PBIS mindset focus. No one can tell it better than my students. So before I turn it over to them, I will quickly fill you in with my own connections. I first came across mindset philosophy when I purchased the book at a summer teaching workshop with Emily Carter about seven years ago. I liked how the concepts within it helped you both personally and professionally. This year, I reflected and reread the book's key concepts through a school-wide book club that I joined in the building. My colleagues and I shared many ideas and lessons at our meetings. Mindset is a powerful resource, and it states effort and hard work is the key to growth. This concept has always been something I've tried to share in my classroom teachings. Everyone makes mistakes, use your strategies to assist your understandings, and believe in yourself, to name a few. It was indirectly taught, though, and now this direct teaching method gives the learners common language and approaches to take when facing these new challenges and skills. The language they use builds self-confidence and reassurance that they can do it and never give up. I have enjoyed seeing my students apply this concept when facing difficulties. One example is a recent Smarter Balance testing. I was so proud of their persistence and effort in doing their personal best in the challenging tests that they were taking. As a lifelong learner, I decided that it would be beneficial to share my own personal growth mindset with my students. First of all, I'm teaching third grade for the first time, after fourth grade for 20 years. I have new understandings, and I am making connections and growing professionally all the time. Also, my husband recently surprised me with a keyboard for my birthday. I haven't played since I was 11, and I only had a year and a half of lessons. This was a really special gift. I had always talked about wanting a piano to play again. I decided to share this with my students and brought them down to the music room to listen to several songs I roughly remembered from my childhood. The students were supportive as I played for them. And when I asked them why I shared these songs, even though I made mistakes, they knew and stated that it was to let them know everyone makes mistakes and can learn new things. I also shared that with continued practice and effort, I hope to learn many new songs and successfully play for them again. We are all lifelong learners, and mindset helps teach our students that intelligence and other qualities, abilities, and talents can be developed with effort, learning, and dedication. So here are a few of my students that will share with you some of their takeaways that they have gone from this focused mindset in class.
Hello, my name is Tegan, and so I'm going to be talking about growth mindset, like she was just mentioning. And this year, one of the projects she had us do was a little like little triangle flag thingy with growth mindset on it. And on the front, it said, "I, growth mindset. I can climb trees, I can do our step, I can act, I cannot write decent nonfiction conclusions yet." The "yet" was written in by itself. And it also said, "Growth mindset," again, "my goal this year." And I wrote, "I want to be able to always remember my homework." And at the bottom, it says, "With effort, I know I can do it." And, and another example from the piano, like, at home, I've been learning how to play the piano because my mom has one. And one of the, one of the songs I was trying to play was Jingle Bells. And there was this one part, one part in the song where I kept messing up. And so, and I kept, I looked at my notes, changed them a bit, and kept trying, and now I can actually play Jingle Bells. And, and I actually wrote out on the mistakes chart, which is still right there and right there. And I actually have a few examples from it, and like, it's mistakes, sorry, inspected, corrected, expected, and respected. And here are a few examples. I accidentally hit button on my keyboard, and now I can listen to music on my keyboard. This was from Sadie. I was reading, but when I did, but when I did, I read fast and made a mistake. Then I learned to read a little slower. This was from Maeve. I fell, I fell on my coach in gymnastics. It helped, I, he helped me learn, I, it, it, I- Um, I, it helped me learn to do what my coach says. This was from Kendall. And I'm just going to skip mine. I tried to do nine times eight, but I got it wrong. I corrected myself, and the next time, now I know I'm 72. Mystery. Okay. And like, so yeah, we did a mistakes chart, and it actually, this was already talking about, neurons like they, when you, okay, you're walking down a road, there's a rock on the road, you fall on the rock. Next time you're walking down a road, your brain's like, "Hey, don't fall on that rock in the road," even though it may or may not be still there. And, and so if, and if the rock is there, your, your brain would probably be like, "Okay, walk around the rock, and then you're good." And so overall, mistakes are inspected, corrected, expected, and respected.
Drop the mic.
Okay, who did it? You? Uh, yeah, here you go.
At school, we have been doing perseverance, and, um, this is what, like Tegan said, with the growth mindset, this is what I wrote. I can ride a bike, I can read, I cannot do, I can do my homework, I cannot do division yet. And what perseverance means is like you keep on trying and trying, and then you get better and better at it. And these are a few classmates, I mean, my few classmates said, "I made a mistake, but I kept on trying. I kept trying and trying, finally got it. I can't do math and basketball yet." And, um, and what's growth mindset? My goal this year, I'll work hard and practice math, and I know I can do division. With effort, I know I can do it. And I keep on practicing and practicing, and then I get better and better at division. So I mostly kind of know how to do it because I'm getting better and I'm practicing.
Um, hi, my name is Ian, and like everybody has pointed out, this year, Ms. Terrio's had us do a little project, and it's a two-sided flag. And on one side, it says, "I can, I can, I can, I cannot." And on the other side, it says, "My goal." So on, um, on the first side, we, it says, "I can read, I can do math, I can do 15 jumping jacks, I cannot jump rope, yet." And the reason we add "yet" is because if you, if saying you can't do something, that's negative mindset, and you need to change that to positive mindset. And all you need to do is add one simple step, "yet." And then, um, on the other side, we, my goal, I wrote down, "To build one robot, and with effort, I know I can do it." So not only has Ms. Terrio had us make this little flag, but she's also shared with us lots of books and videos to help us better understand growth mindset. And one of the videos she had us watch was Mojo, and there's five of them. And it's about a friendly little monster who goes on adventures and learns about his, about his, um, about his brain. And on, in the first episode, he, he likes math, but then he gets, um, he can't do the math anymore because it's harder, and he decides, "I just can't do it, I have to move away." So he starts packing his things, and he's literally going to leave school. And his friend is like, "Why are you leaving school?" And, and he says, "I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I just am not smart enough for school. You're either born dumb or you're either born smart." Not true. And Kate, and she, um, her, his friend talks about how his brain is like a muscle, and while you, when you keep trying, your brain gets stronger. Um, and also, another, um, Mojo video was about the dip. And it's basically like this. Every time you try something new, it's, it's like you're on a journey to do it. And at first, you get really excited, and you're journeying up this hill. But then, you go down a little, and it get, and the journey gets harder, and you have to go back up to, to, um, continue your journey. And that's when you know you're in the dip. And if you- And if you, you could just give up, hence, um, fixed mindset, or you could keep on trying and get out of the dip and, and persevere through. So basically what growth mindset it means is taking on challenging things because it helps our brain grow.
Hello, my name is Geneva and like the rest of these people, I, um, I did a flag. On one side, growth mindset. My goal this year is to put all of my work in on time. With effort, I know I can do it. On the other side, it says, "I can read, I can imagine, and I can draw. I cannot jump rope really well, yet." And then we, Ms. Terrio also made a poster with a bunch of these word bubbles and special colors were for fixed mindset and colorful colors were for the growth mindset. Instead of saying, "I'm done, I'm finished, I'm through," we say, "How can I make this better? What can I fix up? What else can I add? What parts should I reread? How can I check this work?"
As you have heard, mindset has been a constant thread throughout our year, even with our youngest learners. In helping our students understand the importance of perseverance and effort, it is important to instruct in a comfortable and safe environment. Another way that the teachers of MES have helped to create that environment is by giving students open-ended inquiry-based tasks where the students could help lead their own learning. Our kindergarten teachers are here tonight with four of our students to give you insight into what learning has looked like in kindergarten this year. So I will turn it over to Carter Martel, Maggie Pittman, Ella Carl, Braden Painter, and they are accompanied by their teachers, Mrs. Fornier and Mrs. Bolduc.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Debbie Fornier. I'm kindergarten teacher. I'm here with my partner, Kim Bolduc. And we'll tell you a little bit about what kindergarten's been doing this year. Each week since September, Kim and I have been working together to develop activities and put the kindergarten students together. We propose a challenge for them to solve each week. The students receive about five to 10 materials at the beginning of each week and then they have a problem that they have to work together in groups that they need to find a solution to. So these activities are tied together with our weekly lessons so that everything is integrated. For instance, the activity that we're going to share with you here today involved a week's worth of lessons and activities. And then this STEM project was the culminating activity at the end to tie it all together. So we read books with the kindergarten students. We read about the Three Billy Goat Gruff. We read different versions of it so they can get a different perspective. We watch videos of the stories. We watch musical videos, narrative videos, traditional videos, again, to give them different perspectives. After that, we had the children act out the story so that they would take on the personality of the characters in the story as they're working on retelling. And after we're done that, we had the children make a Billy Goat Gruff. So here's some of our samples that children make. So we're working on our cutting and fine motor skills. And then at the very end, we gather all the children together in our science lab at the school and we proposed a problem to them. We said, "How could the Billy Goats get across the bridge without waking the troll?" They want to get to the green grass and they can't get there because the troll is always holding them up. So they needed to design a way that would help the Billy Goats get to the other side. So for this activity, the students were given three blocks, they were given three goats, a rubber band, a troll, a paper towel roll, and a spoon. Throughout the activities that we do together with our classes, we pause and take moments for the kids to share the successes that they're having as they're going through them so they can learn from each other. And then, of course, we take time to talk about what doesn't work so well either. We take pictures of the students as they're working in their groups, each activity, and then on the following school day, we have the children incorporate writing and what they're learning in other areas to explain what the children were doing in the picture. So here's an example up on the board of what the student wrote after they were done this activity the following day. And so they wrote, "We are making a bridge for the goats." They work on those five writing rules in kindergarten and so we use those as a rubric and they self-check those each day that they do writing. Did I start with a capital? Did I end with my punctuation? Did I write the sounds for words? A finger space between each word? And making the words easy to read to be right on the line. So what we're really trying to do is tie all of our curriculum areas together using these activities.
So by providing the STEM activities, they're activities which grow young minds through science, technology, engineering, and math. We're able to incorporate the writing, science, math, literature, common core literacy standards, socialization, and very important teamwork skills with our students. It's been really great because we can get both classes together in the science lab on Friday mornings. They're like, "When are we going to the science lab?" They're so excited and they get to see their friends and work together with other children. We started, as Debbie said, we start talking about the challenge on Mondays so they have time throughout the week to think about the challenge. And you can hear them at snack sometimes saying, "Oh, well, we could do this," or "we could do that," or they're already thinking about it. The students have made a huge change since September when we first started going. At first, they just sort of, I think we did a boat race. They had to, out of recycled materials, make a boat and which boat sunk and which boat could make it across the water. And we went outside and we filled big tubs with water and they raced their boats in September and that was a lot of fun. But that was difficult for them because they didn't know how to work together as a group. So the more we've done it, they've really learned to be a team together and to talk about their ideas. So tonight, oh, so let's talk about these pictures. So these are just some activities, different STEM activities we've done. This was balance a robot on your body challenge. So the children were given a robot, two pennies, tacky sticky tack tape, and they had to figure out how to bend it and where to put the pennies to balance it somewhere on their body. This happens to be mustache day at Master Cola. He doesn't normally have a mustache. So does somebody want to talk about what you did for your robot? Ella, you want to say something?
My name is Ella. I used a sticky tack and I colored the robot different colors.
And how did you balance it on your body? Where on your body?
I balanced it on my thumb and I used the sticky tack to help it balance on my thumb.
So I'm Maggie and I balanced it on my, my finger and, um...
Did you get it right the first time, Maggie? Did you try?
Um, I think I tried.
So then another activity we did, this was a, they had to make a umbrella. They had a piece of plastic, straws, and they had to hold it up over the stuffed animal. We sprayed it with water to see which animals got wet and which umbrella was, you know, kept them dry and which one didn't. So somebody want to talk about their umbrella? Okay.
My name is Carter and we put a bag over our animal and the, and the teachers sprayed them, a spray bottle on, on our umbrella and we had, we had to see if it made the animal wet or not.
My name is Braden. I put, I put a bag over my animal and, and we had to see if it got wet and it didn't get wet.
So that, this is just another picture of them doing that as well. So you can see that they're working in usually groups of three or four. And we try to split them up so that there's a couple from each kindergarten classroom. Braden, do you want to talk about what we did here? So in this picture, they were just given paper towel tubes with holes punched in them and straws and they had to just make something. The little girl in the picture, she made a telescope. And Braden, what did you make?
Glasses.
I, I made some, a telescope.
I made glasses.
So this is actually the activity, the Three Billy Goat Gruff, that the children are going to do for you right now. So, boys and girls, if you could show them how you went about making your bridge. So they have a troll. Why do we have brown paper?
Because that's the yucky grass.
That's the yucky grass. Why do we have green?
Green grass.
To go to the good side. Yep. And here's your Billy Goats.
We're going to make a tunnel so we can get across.
Who's trick trapping on my bridge?
Maggie, can the troll see the Billy Goats when they're in the bridge?
No. Yeah.
So during, during the week, you could hear children saying, "I could, we could make a slingshot, we could make a catapult." And you know, you're thinking five and six-year-olds, it's like, wow! She's holding it for you so you can use both hands. There you go. Perfect. Ella, can you tell me what you're doing?
They're making a catapult.
Well, let's see how this works. Watch out, Mrs. Carter. Yes. These Billy Goats are hungry and they need to get to the other side, so anything goes in the science lab.
Who's that trick trapping over my bridge?
We'll do it again at school, okay? As you can tell, they're very excited about this. So that's a, that is a Friday afternoon or morning in kindergarten at the science lab. The kids absolutely love it. We've done boat races, how to sink a boat, water races with eyedroppers, making bridges. We did how to make a, they had to build a house with cards and tape for the Three Little Pigs. And then our hair dryers were the big bad wolf that blew over the houses. So a lot of fun things are happening at Master Cola kindergarten. Right? Yeah? Thank you. Those are just some photographs from different STEM projects we've done.
Thank you.
As mentioned earlier, tonight, the mindset focus has impacted our staff as well as our students. Another focus that we have put a great deal of investment into this year is in the area of continuing integration. Our first grade team took ideas from both mindset and curriculum integration and worked to create an integrated unit on something, in this case, research, which could be considered a bit intimidating for our young learners. I will invite Alexandra McGregor and she is joined by her first grade teacher, Rachel Shaughnessy, and our library, library media specialist, Katie Petish, to talk about what they've been up to.
Good evening. My name's Katie Petish. I'm the school library media specialist. And this year, I had the opportunity to work with the first grade PLT to develop an integrated unit where we combined the first grade science unit on plants and animals with some of their information, informational text reading standards and also the library research standards that I have in the library. We started by doing some planning around what we wanted to do and we decided that we wanted to do a research project where each student would get to choose an animal that they were going to explore. So it was really student-driven. And what I did then for several weeks was work with the students on what the research process was. And this was a very new concept for them, so it was important that we start with me showing them how I would do it and then doing it together as a group. And at the tail end of a prior unit on how nonfiction is structured and organized, we practiced sorting books and sources to find what would be a good source for a topic. In that case, it was tigers. And then we dove straight into five weeks of research together on a topic that I chose. I chose the porcupine this year, where we did it together. And we looked at the first step, which is wondering about a topic that you don't know a lot about. And we explored the idea that when you're doing research, you don't necessarily choose something that you already know a lot about. something that you already know a lot about because you don't learn a lot that way. Instead, you think, what don't I know? Because we come to school to learn. And so we chose something that, in my case, I did not know a lot about, a porcupine. And then we talked about things that we already knew about porcupines. And what you're seeing on the screen is that particular day, I asked the students to help me and collectively, we wrote down a few things that we, we believed that we knew already about what porcupines do or what they're like. And then we moved on to the third step in the research process, which is asking questions. Not answering them, but just asking questions. And Alex, are there any bad questions? No, no bad questions. No, and so we wrote down as many questions about porcupines as we could think of. And in some cases, the things that we already knew led us to ask questions. So if one student knew that porcupines bite, another student might ask, why do porcupines bite? And so we discovered that following steps in this research process allowed us to build on each step towards finding our information, rather than just diving in and attacking it whole hog. After we asked our questions, then I helped them find some good sources for porcupines and we spent a few weeks finding answers, which is our last step in the research process. And we did this all so that when they were going to start their research, they would have been through the entire process of research from start to finish together. And this slide doesn't show it, but in the next weeks after that, we modeled exactly what their worksheets would look like so that the research that Mrs. Pethish was doing was the research that they would be doing and that they're going to start working on themselves. And Alex has prepared something that she would like to share with us about the process that we did together as we were learning about research. So I'm going to turn it over to Alex and she's going to talk about that for you.
Hello. When we were writing what we already knew about porcupines, somebody said they shoot their quills. But when we were fighting ants, we learned that they don't. Their quills have something sharp at the bottom by the quill. I used what I learned at school to learn more at home. Another time, we were looking for good sources of facts about tigers. I saw a book about big cats. I used that too because I knew tigers were big cats. Thank you.
So step two of the research process is I know some facts already. That's what you see up here. And we noticed that the student that she mentioned did say that they shoot their quills for protection. And what did we use, Alex, to learn that they do not shoot their quills?
We used it on a computer and the computer book was, the question was, do porcupines shoot their quills? It was a video.
So we selected a good source. It was a video from the Smithsonian where they talked about porcupines. And we used that to reinforce the fact that we can't just say something is true because you can't prove it. You have to prove where you got your information. And what we're doing is we're laying the foundation for the research skills they're going to need throughout their education, even through, up through college and graduate school, as far as they can possibly go, they will need these skills. And it was laying that first foundation. We also used photographs and diagrams with labels to learn about those particular text features, which is something that is great appropriate and also they learned that they can get a lot of information just from the pictures and the diagrams. And Alex, I have one more question for you. When we were learning about what a porcupine looks like, do you remember what you learned from the picture, what you noticed in the picture?
It has guard hairs on its upper body. Quills are small and large. It has four legs. It has little eyes. The quills are black and white. It has a small head with a square face. Its colors are brown, black, and white. It has thirty thousand quills. It has clawed feet for climbing. On the back, its back has quills. Its tail has quills.
Thank you. And now I want to introduce Rachel Shaughnessy, who is Alex's first grade teacher, and she's going to talk a little bit about the next part of their project.
Good evening. I'm really excited to share with you what the first graders are going to be working on for the next month or so. So now that they've learned about the research product, process in the library with Mrs. Pethish, each student is going to be starting their own research project. So they were given a list of over forty, over fifty animals and you can see it's from a really wide range of animals. There's aardvark and hyena, dog, panda. So there was a big range of animals that they could choose from. And we picked this list based on the resources that were available for the students in the library. We wanted to make sure there was enough books on penguins for the whole first grade or enough books on cows. And we also wanted to make sure that the books they were using were at a first grade level. So it was a book that the students would be able to read on their own. So once they picked their animal, they were encouraged to pick something, like Mrs. Pethish said, something they don't know a lot about already, but we wanted it to be something they were really interested in. So something they wanted to learn more about and something they would be excited in, excited to learn about since we'll be working on it for a while. And so this week, we're kicking off our project and they're starting the research. And we're going to start out in the computer lab. And with Mr. Grant, they're going to work to bring up a picture of their animal on the computer and start their research just by looking at it to learn more about the animal. So they'll make a list of the animal characteristics. And we practiced in our classroom today, do you want to tell them what animal we practiced with?
A camel.
So we practiced with a camel, that's what I picked for my research project. And tomorrow, when my class has computer, they're all going to bring up a picture of their animal and write down what they can learn about the animal from that picture. Do you remember what we learned about the camel?
It has a hump on its back. It has tiny ears and a small head.
Nice job. So we didn't even need to do any reading for that part of our research. We were just getting information by looking at a picture. And then the information that they get from looking at the picture, they're going to take to the library, to the art room and work with Mrs. Boziak to all create a mask of their animal. So that's another part of the research project, to have a 3D picture of what their animal really looks like. And in, in the classroom, using books and pictures, they're each going to create an animal research report. So they're going to be researching things like characteristics of their animal, what kind of food their animal eats, what the life cycle of their animal is. And then we're going to build off the part of the research progress, process where they're generating their own questions. So they'll be picking things that they want to learn about their animal, generating the questions and finding the answers on their own. And we also wanted to incorporate a technology piece. So at the very end, once they've completed all their research, they'll go back into the computer lab and they'll create a labeled diagram of their animal. So it includes all the characteristics that they found throughout the research. And the finished project in the end is going to be an animal research report and they'll make a cover with a table of contents, all their research pages, their diagram. And we're also expecting that they include their sources. So we're going to teach them how to share what they learned and how someone else could find that same fact that they wrote. So they're not copying it or if someone wants to go and find that same fact, they know where to get it. And they'll get a chance at the end of the project to share their finished animal research project with all of the other students at MES and their parents are going to be invited. So we're really excited to see what they come up with at the end. Thank you so much.
So, these are but a few of the many things that are happening at Master Cola. And I'd like to thank you for having us here this evening. And as, and I'd like to close out our presentation the way that we close out our, our morning announcements. So if I could ask the students to please stand up. And I'm going to say, and here's today's reminder. Thank you. And then, Alex has something she'd like to ask you.
Do you have any questions for any of us?
Hey, that's my line. Are there any questions from the board or the administration for students and staff? There are no questions. Um, honestly, what a great job, everyone. So I know it's probably past your bedtime because I know what my bedtime is and it's not far from yours. So, but you guys did a wonderful job and if we learn nothing else tonight, you guys work really hard every day and you go into school and you have a really good attitude and you try really hard. So we are super proud of all that you're doing every day in school. And you're, you know, making your teachers very proud, we can see that as well. And Mrs. Carter as well, and Mrs. Romaine. So this is your last presentation, Mrs. Carter, and we thank you for your service to the district. So, thank you, guys. So we will give a moment to switch over to the next agenda item.
You know, I certainly remember school being that engaging when I was in those grade levels. Can you hear you? Seriously, I thought I was in like one of my master's courses.
The way the kid sold, he sold it. He sold it.
She wants to stay. You don't want to listen to this. It all goes down, it all goes downhill from here.
And as Master Cola is clearing out, I'm going to invite to the table Jack Balcom and Chris Christensen, who have the unenviable task of following Master Cola Elementary School, but giving us great updates about the trust, the trust funds that you are trustees of. Thanks, everyone. Yes, you're welcome, we're glad to have you. The magic decade, that's our takeaway tonight.
Well, it's magic in the next decade or three, too. So, anyway, thank you all very much. I have to say first that for me, one of the most amazing things about the earlier part of the agenda was the public speaking from the students. I think we all know that public speaking is for many people scarier than spiders and snakes. And for them to get up in front of a group like this, do what they did at that age, just, it's very, very impressive. So, you have in your packets, some stuff, but I'm going to, unless you would like to do this, just give you a little bit of background, mostly for the folks that don't have the packets in front of them. So, would you like to speak first or would you like us to?
Well, what I figured we could do is if you'd like to go through the different funds and in our packets, we had an explanation of basically the rules and regulations to follow it. You're a new advisor, so it sounds like you are just changing some, some management of, of who you're working with. So, and I don't know how that might affect how you're able to expend funds. If there's anything, any changes we need to know about with that, then let me know, but, or let us know. And, and just honestly going through the funds and where they've been used and where you see the appropriate uses for the different buckets of money. So, it'll open up some great dialogue.
Okay. So let me just mention for the, the folks in the TV audience, that we're talking about some spreadsheets here of funds that are held by the trustees of trust funds. There are three of us and only Jack, two of us, Jack and I could be here tonight, but that's basically how it works. We're each elected on staggered three-year terms. And in total, we manage approximately fifteen thousand dollars for the town, about ten thousand of that or nine thou, excuse me, nine million of, million of that is capital reserve funds for the town, the school, and the Merrimack Village District. And then we have in, in market value, about six and a half million dollars in permanent funds. A good portion of that is for the school, some for the libraries, some for fire protection, and then a huge amount that's related to perpetual care for, for cemeteries. So that, that's the basis of what we do. Shannon mentioned that we're changing advisors. We are required to have a financial advisor under state law. And we had one, the gentleman that was the lead person retired. And so we went out and did some interviews and got a new advisor, in this case, Cambers Trust Company. And they've been managing our capital reserve funds for several years. We're very pleased with their services and we're happy to be working with them in an expanded capacity. So the funds that we have at this point, the Watkins Speaking Contest, the Watkins Spelling Contest, Prize Speaking in particular is something we should talk about a little bit later on because we had such some, some great speakers there. Gage and Lawrence Fund, the Stockley Fund, Watkins Fund, which is just a cash donation as, as most of these were. Master Cola Fund, the Watkins Forest Income Fund. So maybe you want to take a look at the list and just explain what each of those funds goes to, Jack?
Um, well, first I was going to make a joke. I was going to say that your funds here are like neurons, they get bigger and stronger every day. I don't know what I can say that we haven't said before. We have been using various funds for the different libraries at the different schools. I was glad to see one of the librarian media specialists here, you know, doing research with the, with the kids in the new library. We do have one more library that we're working on. We just approved, what was it, a hundred thousand?
Hundred and ten thousand, yes.
And that came out of a combination, oh, that was, was that the Gage and Lawrence?
Nope, comes out of Watkins.
Watkins, okay. Oh, the, for the most part, the funds were done a long time ago when we only had eighth, up to eighth grade. So that presents a problem for us, for the new members of the board here, just for information. The way that was interpreted for the funds that were back then is that we can only use those trust funds for up to eighth grade. There are some exceptions. I don't have those exceptions at the tip of my tongue, but then there's things like the Master Cola, I'm just catching some people up. Master Cola Funds, James Master Cola left a considerable amount of money that has grown into even more money. And only those schools that are named after him can take the benefit from those funds, which is why you may wonder in Merrimack why we have, excuse me, so many schools that are named James Master Cola. So that's the story behind that. And I'll let Chris go ahead and talk about the individuals.
So, the Watkins, Harry Watkins was very strong in Merrimack education and he left two small funds. The Watkins Prize Spelling Contest, does a spelling bee every year that people get cash prizes as well as a gift certificate to Barnes and Noble or some other. to Barnes and Noble or some other similar prize. There is the Watkins Prize Speaking Contest. This is for seventh and eighth grade. And that has not been run for several years. We had a rejuvenation of it two years ago. You can see in the expenditure page when we get to that, that we started that and then it's, has not been able to continue, which is a little bit of a disappointment because we got that money and we're supposed to give it away. Gage and Lawrence Fund was just left for the basic use of the school district and the Stockley Fund was the same way. Now, some of you who've been in through this mill before remember that we used to have fund A, B, C, and D and how those came about so far back in history that nobody really has anything to describe it. But, for convenience of management, we've combined those into one common fund now and so we'll be combining and reporting the Gage and Lawrence and Stockley Fund as one event or one fund.
We went over that with Matt at the last meeting, Matt was there.
Harry Watkins, in addition to those two funds, left a sum of money to the school, or the school district, as Jack says, for grades one through eight. And then he also left, and we manage 135 acres of forest land. And the provision is that the forest shall be harvested periodically and the funds received from the harvest go into the Watkins Forest Income Fund, which is another separate fund. And then the income from that is what's used to provide benefits to the schools. Now, some years back, and as you look at the first spreadsheet on the right-hand side, there's a column that says 2008 totals. And I put that in there because that was about the time that we stopped giving money every year without purpose and started accumulating some income that we could do larger projects. So we used to give money for each fund, and you can see the Stockley Fund, for example, the money was like $90 a year. Not much you can do with that. And we did this in June at the end of the school year and also the end of the fiscal year. So when we gave you that $90 or whatever the money happened to be from any of the funds, we agreed with the earlier school board that that just went into surplus and surplus at the end of the fiscal year really couldn't be spent and the surplus goes back to the taxpayers. Well, we decided or agreed that that was not the intent of the grantors, but their intent was to do things for the students. So we changed over to a practice where we accumulate the income, and you can see those numbers on the spreadsheets, and then use that for such things as the libraries. So having accumulated some of those funds also allows us to reinvest the income and gives a much better or bigger benefit in terms of what's available to use for various projects. They have all of these, yes.
Oh, they do, okay, but they don't have this one.
Yes, they do. So, there was a question raised about how much has been spent for various purposes over the last several years and you have a separate spreadsheet for that. And you can see some years we spent considerable amounts of money and some years not so much because we were accumulating. Now, as it turns out, when you look at the accumulated funds on just two sides to the ledger, if you will, one is principal, which we cannot spend, and the other is the income, which is on the right-hand side of the ledger. And you'll see that the total funds have grown considerably over the last 10 years or so, in part because of what we refer to as very defensive investments. And during the recession and the coming out of the recession, that defensive strategy worked very well for us. And I think after that, I think it's probably better to respond to questions than trying to make a spreadsheet sound interesting.
Marge, did you want to start first?
I just wanted to say that the trustees have been so wonderful to work with and I think one of the things that Jack was saying is that he couldn't remember one of the things that happened for the high school and I wanted to point that out. I think a goal has always been perhaps to offer up seed money for a program with the idea that the school board would take it on and take it on as its own. So, the trustees were responsible for beginning Mandarin Chinese at the high school and that has now taken on a life of its own. And we have just been told, by the way, that a former student who went on to UNH is getting the award from UNH for his proficiency in Mandarin Chinese. So I thought it was important for the trustees to realize that, but that is an example of seed money where we then went forward and grew the program. Likewise, in talking with the trustees over time, it's to try and utilize money for what we call the greater good or the larger population. So every time that they have put money forward for our libraries, every child and every staff member utilizes that library and as they saw tonight, the fruit on the vine, which was our youngest students doing research in an updated library. So they will have been responsible for, if you will, really bringing forward Master Cola Elementary, Reed's Ferry Elementary, Thornton's Ferry Elementary, and this summer will be the upper elementary. That to me is a huge accomplishment because it will affect every single student and staff member in those schools. As well, in the upper elementary school, really getting into an enhanced sound system in the Smith Gym. The physical education teacher uses that every single day in instruction, as well as every presentation that's been done since has just been so much better to be able to hear appropriately when we have some of these wonderful speakers. I believe it was just used for the Veterans Day presentation and what a difference it has made. So every single day, again, it's being fully utilized. So I felt it important to just take a step forward to say what you've done because it's been phenomenal, really.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to hear about the student winning the Mandarin Award at UNH. That's...
And it's just happened, so...
That's exciting information.
It is, it's terrific. I had forgotten about that, thanks.
Are there any questions from the board about the trust funds? Michael?
Not so much a question, but first, thank you for supporting the trust funds and what you do for them. Appreciate that. I like that you gave a little history and a background of each fund. I thought that was very helpful and informative. One thing that I kind of talked to Marge a little bit about, maybe even posting some of that information on the page that actually posts the funds so that if someone were to come across it and just had some wanted knowledge or background about those funds, it might be also helpful, too.
Thank you, good idea.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, I wanted to thank you for coming. But if you hadn't seen our last meeting, you don't know that we had our district parent groups as well that raise funds to further the school district's initiatives and enhance the education and environment in which we serve our students every year and you are such a major part of that for us. What you have done with the libraries, I think the first one was Master Cola Elementary. And I know that we all had a reception together when that opened and the vision of how we can replicate that model and really have a positive learning environment. And you've taken on all the other libraries in our elementary level and just the impact that has to every student in the district is immeasurable. You really are hitting thousands of students every year with your investment in using these funds. So, thank you for your intelligent and conservative oversight, growing the fund year over year. And we will definitely always work to use it very, you know, work with you to use it very wisely. So we thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We do have, as we mentioned, considerably more funding than we've had in previous years and I think the grantors' goal was to do things for the students. And I would encourage you to be creative and at least for the elementary schools, spend some of that money. I mean, it's growing faster than you're spending it, which is not a bad thing, but there's a lot of opportunity that we still could work in. And I want to say one other thing. Matt Chevanel came to our last meeting and gave us a little rundown on the processes that are used within the school district for purchasing and how that goes through the various steps necessary to get something accomplished financially and we really appreciate his time. Even though we've been doing this for some years, it was a very enlightening discussion. So, thank you, Matt.
Matt, yeah?
Yeah, could just elaborate that, just to let you know that we are prudent in what we are doing. The initial request for the library at J Muse, which I believe was estimated around $110,000, and I usually say those bid prices are usually, for me at least, points for negotiation. So, right now, we're looking at a total cost of around $93,000 to $94,000. So we brought that down considerable just to show that we are, you know, prudent stewards of the money that you have available for us to utilize. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I know you want to do what you can.
Yeah.
We have an obligation as fiduciary trustees to work in the same direction, so thank you.
I think it's also a credit to the school district of the kind of creative things. The first library was put in many years ago and technology has made leaps and bounds. New kinds of projectors, new kinds of fancy technology has come in and all the libraries have adopted. I've seen some of the presentations here on this channel and in this set. So, it's a credit to the school district. Happy to do it.
And thank you so much again. We are on to item number five, which is information regarding health insurance plan options for employees. I invite to the table our Director of Human Resources, Linda Hastings, and our Health Trust representative, longtime partner of ours in keeping our staff healthy, and that is Debbie Clayton. So thank you and welcome. 'Tis the season. So, welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. So tonight, we were asked to bring an information packet to talk about the three health plans that we will roll out in the month of May for effective July 1st. And we were here to talk about those plans that will be rolled out and it will only be to the professional staff for the next fiscal year. So we have Debbie Clayton here, again, our account rep for many, many years, who's going to talk about the three plans. Feel free to ask questions. And so without further ado, I'll have Debbie to move right in to the plans.
Thank you, Linda. As was mentioned, I'm Debbie Clayton, I'm your benefits coordinator from Health Trust and for the public's purpose, Health Trust is a nonprofit public sector organization that provides the employee benefits to the Merrimack School District. And to make it easy or as easy as possible for us to compare and contrast the three benefits that Linda was mentioning, I'm going to go over the comparison chart that's tucked loosely inside your folder. And then inside your folder, you'll find all of the formal cost sharing schedules, benefit summaries, and all of the other ancillary enhancements to your plan in your folder. But let's just start here to consolidate the information that we'll review. The first thing that you're going to notice is you're going to have three different headings. You'll see Blue Choice Point of Service, Access Blue, and Access Blue Site of Service. All three of these plans are offered to the school district through Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield. The first thing where they are the same as opposed to different, for the Blue Choice Point of Service Plan, that network is primarily New Hampshire. You'll see that the big difference here is that there are three columns. With Blue Choice, you have the ability to go wherever you want, whenever you want. 98% of individuals choose to seek services by either seeing their selected primary care provider or getting a referral for their specialty care from their primary care provider. But you'll see that each heading is, each rather, column is listed with a separate heading. With Blue Choice, as I had mentioned, the network is primarily New Hampshire, however, primary care providers have the ability to refer anywhere within the United States. With the two plans to the right, you'll see that they are Access Blue plans and they have one column. Those are HMO plans. As of July 1st of 2016, we enhanced our HMO plans. Some of you folks may remember that our HMOs were titled Matthew Thornton Blue and beginning July 1st of 2016, those began being called Access Blue New England Plans. And the big change was is that we expanded the ability to choose primary care providers from any of the six New England states and as long as individuals are seeking services within those six New England states, they wouldn't require any referrals for any of their specialty care. We also acknowledge and we do provide education to this effect, if your specialist office or the facility that you need to visit requires a referral, that's separate from your plan requirement and then in fact you would need to get a referral. But that's entirely a practice pattern, if you will. So knowing how they are similar and different in terms of network, et cetera, I'm just going to go line by line. So for comparison purposes, I'm going to highlight the column all the way to the left on the Blue Choice Point of Service Plan and then I'll compare it to, rather, the other two columns to the right, the two Access Blue HMO plans. And again, feel free to ask questions throughout so that we can make sure that everyone gets everything they want from this presentation. Okay, primary care provider office visit. With the Blue Choice Plan, it's a $20 copayment. The Access Blue Plan, it's a $20 copayment. Access Blue Site of Service, also a $20 copay. The next row is Specialist Visit. It's $20 on the Blue Choice Plan and the Access Blue Plan. The Site of Service Plan, which is the plan all the way to the right, which I'll probably say repeatedly, is $40 per visit. The other thing to mention, I didn't bring costs with me this evening, however, in terms of Blue Choice, Access Blue, then Site of Service, so thinking left to right, it's also set up left to right in terms of cost. So the most expensive would be on the left, the least expensive on the right. Emergency Room Copayment and Urgent Care Copayments are exactly the same for all three plans. It costs $100 to go to the emergency room or $50 for urgent care. And I always like to remind individuals through education that that copayment is just to walk through the door at those environments. So in some plans, which you'll see momentarily, the other things that are done to you while you're seeking services in those environments may come with separate charges. So, I look at those copayments as just to walk through the door. The standard deductible, as long as you're seeking services either through your primary care provider or with a referral on Blue Choice, there's no deductible. No deductible on the Access Blue Plan. On the Site of Service Plan, there's a $1,000 deductible per member, no more than $3,000 of deductible per family per year. Co-insurance. Co-insurance is a percentage you would pay after you meet the deductible and the only time that you would see any type of co-insurance on these three plans is if in fact you were accessing care without a referral from your Blue Choice primary care provider. Durable medical equipment, that includes things such as hearing aids, crutches, CPAP machines and supplies, as long as it's referred by your primary care provider, Blue Choice covers those items in full. On the Access Blue Plan, you would pay 20% of the cost, the plan would pay 80. And on the Site of Service Plan, it's also the 80/20 share and there is a separate $100 deductible to pay per person per year. The out-of-pocket limit, this is the most that you will pay out of pocket in any plan year. This was a financial protection included in all plans that had to be put in place to comply with the Affordable Care Act. So I think about it as all the rows that we've reviewed thus far, you're paying $20 to see your doctor, maybe you've got 20% because you're buying a hearing aid. Anytime you're paying towards the cost of your healthcare, it does tick towards a threshold or a maximum. or a maximum. And it is in fact, a protection. It's not a benefit limitation, it is a protection. So, if through paying those out-of-pocket costs, you were to hit five thousand if you were single, or ten thousand if you were a two-personer family, then you would pay nothing at all. You don't pay to go to the doctor, you don't pay for your hearing aids, everything is covered in full. So, for any inpatient stays, that's the next row down, Blue Choice, again, as long as it's referred by the PCP, is covered in full. Access Blue is covered in full. The Site of Service Plan is subject to the standard deductible. And I usually get to my favorite point, it's the beginning of page two, where I like to give an example. But just quickly now, so, inpatient stays, this is where you're first seeing the standard deductible on the Site of Service Plan on the right. So, if someone were to enroll in this plan on July 1st, and the first thing they had scheduled for summer vacation was a knee replacement, and they were in for three days, two nights, et cetera, a true inpatient stay, it would be subject to the thousand dollar deductible, no more. Under preventive care services, that one's easy, because all preventive care services in network are covered in full. Eyewear, some of our programs have a forty dollar reimbursement towards the purchase of frames, lenses, or contact lenses every so many months. So, with the Blue Choice Plan, you get forty dollars per member every two calendar years. The Access Blue Plan, you get forty dollars every single year. And with the Site of Service Plan, it is not a benefit component. For outpatient visits, anytime you're seeing a doctor's office, a doctor for a visit, you're going to pay your office visit copayment. Any outpatient surgery, lab, x-ray, ultrasound is covered in full on Blue Choice, covered in full under the Access Blue Plan, subject to the standard deductible on the Site of Service Plan. And you're going to see in brackets there, a number five, because there are two areas that make the Site of Service, I would say, a consumer-friendly type plan. It allows individuals the opportunity to avoid paying their deductible if they seek certain services from preferred sites of service. One would be lab services, and the other would be for outpatient surgical procedures. If someone has their labs done at a preferred site of service, it's covered in full. If someone has their outpatient surgical procedure done at a preferred ambulatory surgical center, it's covered at a seventy-five dollar copayment. If they choose not to, or they're medically not able to go to a preferred site of service, then it would be subject to that standard deductible. So, I'll go back to another example. So, in the knee replacement situation, say that poor person had to have their gallbladder out that same summer, and they chose not to go to a preferred site of service, but it's an outpatient surgical procedure, they've already met their deductible by having that previous surgery. So, if they chose to just go to Elliott or CMC to have their gallbladder out, a day surgery, it would, it would be covered in full, because they've already met their deductible. If they hadn't had that previous surgery, and it was the first thing that they were doing in the summer, and they went to a preferred site of service, the gallbladder removal would cost seventy-five dollars. Any, basically, all those alphabet soup there, so MRI, MRA, PET scan, CAT scans, chemotherapy, Blue Choice, it's covered in full, the Access Blue Plan, it's covered in full, Site of Service, the standard deductible. One more example, you've had your knee surgery, six weeks later, they want to do an MRI to check on how you're healing. The MRI is covered in full, because you've already met your deductible. Maternity care is billed once to the plan as an inpatient stay. So, that's covered in full under Blue Choice and Access Blue. In the Site of Service, it's subject to the standard deductible. Turning the page over to page two, that highlights emergency room and urgent care, and this is where you're going to see where I was referencing in the beginning, that the copayment is just to walk through the door. So, for the first two rows, emergency room copay, urgent care copay, that's what you're paying. The physician's fee, surgery, radiology, lab, x-ray, ambulance, you see, you pay zero on Blue Choice, you pay zero on the Access Blue Plan, and subject to the standard deductible on the Site of Service Plan. Outpatient physical rehab, so for physical speech and occupational therapy, with the Blue Choice Plan, you do not pay your office visit copayment, and there are unlimited visits. On the Access Blue Plan, you would pay your twenty-dollar copayment, and you have up to sixty visits per person per year, and that would be a combined maximum. So, if individuals needed all of those sixty visits for physical therapy, that's fine. Thirty visits for physical, thirty visits for occupational, that's fine. It's kind of a mix-and-match type situation. And then, the Site of Service Plan, you would pay your forty-dollar specialty copayment, and you have up to twenty visits per therapy per member per year. So, it does split out the, the limits based on type of therapy. Cardiac rehab, you pay your office visit copayment. There are no limits across any of our plans. On chiropractic here, you do pay your office visit copayment with Blue Choice, and you have unlimited visits. The Access Blue Plan, you have your twenty-dollar copay, and you have up to twelve visits. And then, also, the plan on the right, the Site of Service, you would pay your forty-dollar copayment, and you have up to twelve visits. Any x-rays that are performed by your chiropractor are covered in full on Blue Choice and Access Blue, subject to the standard deductible on the Site of Service Plan. Behavioral health and substance abuse care, any outpatient visits are subject to the twenty-dollar copayment. Inpatient stays are covered in full under Blue Choice and Access Blue, and subject to the standard deductible on Site of Service. And then, lastly, the prescription drug benefit, which I see is the same for all three options here. We do partner with CVS Caremark to provide our pharmacy benefit, pharmacy benefits. And what you have here at the district is what we like to call RX 102045. So, if individuals are purchasing a prescription at the local retail pharmacy, and they can use any pharmacy that they wish, they are not tied to CVS Pharmacy, or they're purchasing a ninety-day supply through the mail order benefit, they pay ten dollars for generic medications, twenty dollars for preferred brands, and forty-five dollars for non-preferred brand-name medications. Any questions about any of that?
Cindy?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say, this is extremely helpful. This matrix is very well laid out.
Thank you.
I really wish I had one from my employer, very similar, because I think it, it makes it very clear and easy to follow, knowing that it's summary only, but still, it gives you some pretty specific ideas of, of what kind of coverage you can select. So, so I just wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you. Generally, what we see is by using this through benefit education and open enrollment, combined with what's provided in terms of the cost breakdown structure for the employees, so those two pieces of paper, they can see the benefits line by line, and then they have their cost breakdown. It helps them, gives them the most information for their decision purposes.
Andy?
So, Debbie and Linda, this is great to see the summary. I'd just like to remind everybody that's listening that what's new this year is that the Site of Service Plan, the Access Blue Site of Service, this is the first year that the district is offering that. So, there was discussion about healthcare cost and, and reduced cost plans that reduce costs for both the district as well as for the employees, you know, higher deductible, but lower cost to them out of po, or, you know, at least out of their, their weekly sort of deductions. So, the Site of Service is new. So, we'll have, the, the challenge will be, how many people actually sign up for this, the Site of Service, and, and sort of what that uptake is versus the others. So, it'll be good, sort of what we'll want to see is after we get through the open enrollment, what we're seeing in terms of sort of the uptake for that new plan, to see how successful it is to drive future plans that we may want to offer, things like that. So...
Just to add to that, this is the first year that we are rolling these out to our professional staff. But we have rolled it out to our staff that are non-affiliated with the associations. And we also offer this to our retirees. We have three other retirees who have elected the Site of Service Plan. We did have one employee, non-affiliated, who is also on the Site of Service Plan. So, we're becoming very familiar with this now, and, and the utilization of the plan. There are still some questions, and I think being very new with the professional staff, we'll find a lot more with this. But I do want to point out that the Health Trust does a wonderful job explaining this. We do each school, we go visit each school for open enrollment, and Debbie's very good about going through the whole plan again with questions. So, we do a very thorough open enrollment, and I think this year will probably take a little bit more time on the Site of Service, because it is a change for the professional staff. But it is, like I said, we've been doing this for a number of years, eighteen for me, and with the Health Trust. So, it's, we find that each year, we have more and more people, because they're experiencing more. So, the questions are new for us, and Debbie's always there to answer them. So, we, you know, we do this, and we do it for the employees. We think it's something that we should all be knowledgeable about, not just the HR department. So, and I thank the board for their support, you know, in rolling this out as well.
Thank you. And what I would have to say is, you know, when you talk about Site of Service Plans, you expect a skeleton plan with high deductibles and coverages that are vague, and it's very comprehensive. And, you know, your delivery of it is, is really, you know, I think highlighting that. So, although you don't have the same coverage as you'd have with others, you know, again, less out-of-pocket, you know, every two weeks, you'd be paying more out-of-pocket for usage. But I think it's something when you talk about the demographic profile of our district, there are people that definitely will benefit from the three different plans, in that, you know, someone definitely can see some savings, you know, especially when you were in their career, you know, younger, right out of college, that, you know, is definitely not necessarily going to be facing some of the same medical challenges that we do as we're, again, outside the, the magic decade. So, but, you know, that being said, I just think choice is, is going to be good for our staff. And, you know, advocating, you know, really what those benefits are is going to be important for us to, to really show that they're still getting value in each of the plans that we offer. The one thing I think our district has always been good about is not offering something for the sake of offering it, but offering it, because we can find, our employees can find great value and, and benefit both to themselves. And, you know, our district will of course, benefit as well in, in the taxpayer. You know, we always try to keep an eye on that. But it doesn't, I don't think, I think there's a true strike of balance with this, with new Site of Service Plan, that everyone will be well-served and, and have a real, a real choice for their, their personal benefits. So, this is fantastic. It really, it's, it's a good, you know, a good rollout for a big chunk of our staff.
I just wanted to add one more thing to this, Shannon, and that is, although we go through the plans and the designs of each one of these plans, there is so much more to the health insurance outside of this. We now have a great utilization for our Smart Compass Shopper, which I think Deb can add as well. One of the things that we do in the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee is really to, to try to educate, and I think that's very important for all of our consumers to be educated on the health plans, and going through the, our Slice of Life programs, and all the other programs that are added. The added benefits to this are phenomenal. They really are. And our job is to really, to continue to educate those, to show what we have in addition to just your health plan. So, Debbie, do you just want to talk about the Smart Shopper for a second? Because this is where we're going to save the district some money.
Definitely.
Well, actually, a couple of different things. All of the plus information, if you will, is on the left-hand side of your folder, if you open up that green folder. And the first thing that you'll see, which the school district has been just phenomenal in participation for many, many years, and that is our Slice of Life program, that's our wellness program. It can change periodically. It's on a, runs on a calendar year basis, and our board is constantly analyzing, reviewing, looking at all of the data, our successes, maybe not some great successes, but we always want to make it the best possible wellness program that we can provide to our members. So, this kind of, starting from the health assessment completion, which is that kind of peach rectangle, and if you go clockwise, you can see all of the components of our Slice of Life Wellness Program, which is available to all of your medically insured individuals. So, we're very proud about that program. And then, the next sheet on the inside is the glossy, what is Smart Shopper, what Linda was referring to. Excuse me. So, we rolled out this Smart Shopper program back in January 1 of 2015 for our entire Health Trust membership. But prior to that, the Merrimack School District was chosen as a pilot group, knowing how active, involved, and informed all of your members are. So, during that period, we really gained so much information to know that it was something we really needed to get out to our members. So, the front page that you see, what is Smart Shopper, that's telling all of our member folks how to log on to our, our website, which is healthtrustnh.org. All they need is their Anthem ID card to do so. But then, on the backside, you'll see the complete listing of procedures, tests, labs, et cetera, that individuals, if they choose to shop these listed items, they can shop via telephone, or they can shop via our secure online portal, is if they are currently going to a cost-effective facility, or they change where they're going and go to a cost-effective facility, they're going to receive a check in the mail. We see this as our cost transparency tool to further educate individuals on what things cost. Based on the current plan designs, some folks might not have any out-of-pocket costs for certain items on this list, but it's very beneficial for them to know what they do cost. So, in that instance, we strongly encourage people to use the program, receive those cash incentive checks in the mail. And we have seen excellent participation amongst all areas of your school district. Currently, sorry, for 2016, we saw a $2.8 million savings in medical claims, and then we expect that to be three and a half to four for 2017, considering our increased participation, education, et cetera. It's 100% voluntary, but we always strongly encourage people that say, "I love my provider, I love my facility, I do not want to change where I'm going, shop anyway," because you don't know if that place is already a Smart Shopper low-cost facility until you look. So, this way, you know where you're going, you're more confident knowing you're going, because you know it's a cost-effective facility, and you'll get a check in the mail.
Are there any questions about the additional programs, Slice of Life and the Smart Shopper? It's fantastic. And I will see you on Wednesday at, at Healthcare Cost Containment. Oh, no, please do. Absolutely.
Let me promote the Smart Shop. Debbie, by the way, is the woman who calls me up, who I've known for a decade, two decades probably, who gives me the good news on the 3.7% guaranteed rate increase this year. So, I was very happy to hear her. But I just want to talk about the Smart Shopper thing. I've used it myself. And the good thing about it is it shows you what it would have cost the district if you were to go, let's say, an MRI on my shoulder. A couple of years ago, I had that done, right? And if I went to St. Joe's, it would have been a cost to the district of three grand. If I go to like Basque Imaging or something else, it's like maybe seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, you can see that portion of what you're saving the district. And then, you get a check for two hundred, hundred and fifty dollars. So, for me, it's like, I'm saving the district money. I'm going to help do my, what I can to keep the premiums down for everybody. And plus, magically, I get money in my pocket. And it's so simple, you go and you do a search based on what you need to have done, and the search is stored. So, all you do is show up at the location of your choosing, and it just happens. So, it's just so easy. So, I really, you know, want to encourage everybody to, to look at that, because it's a tremendous program.
Naomi?
Just a stray thought, one of the things that sounds really nice about is that it's not punitive in nature. And sometimes, the incentive programs of this type can be, which is a two-edged sword. So, it's very nice to see that we're getting the benefits while, while making a positive experience.
Thank you. To that point, we are all carrot, no stick. And to Matt's point, to share with everyone that you may or may not know, is we really do strongly encourage people to participate in the Slice of Life, the Smart Shopper, so that when you can be that wiser consumer, you can be a healthier individual, you can make a difference, you can make a change, because 90% of what we build, the district, is based on how the employees use it. So, oftentimes, someone may commonly think, "Well, how can I make a difference? How can I affect these millions of dollars in medical claims?" Well, you can, on a small scale, but it surely does make a difference.
Once you get into it, it almost becomes a mindset that you're automatically, if you need something, you're going to go there first to see, as opposed just to getting sent someplace from your physician's office. So, once you get into the habit of that, and it's been around for a few years now, and I believe it's, you know, you said it's taking off, I can see it taking off in a very large way, definitely.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing them, we thank you very much. I know the work is just beginning to educate the masses. I think quite a few teachers you'll be talking to this season. And from our side of the table, when will we first start seeing enrollments finalized? Actually, Linda, you could probably...
We have to start open enrollment next week.
Okay.
We have to have everything up to the Health Trust by mid-June, which we try to get up rather early. So, we will see those numbers probably on the July bill. We'll see any of the changes.
Excellent. And then, just any new teachers that we hire over the summer will be the only
only changes that could come to that enrollment window?
That's correct. So, when we do do the new hire orientation in the summer, we also have Debbie there doing that again for us. So, they are very supportive for our district. And, yeah, we'll have a better, those new hires won't, we won't see that until September, probably until October, when we get this September bill.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. We look forward to further data points. And we are on to item number six, which is discussion regarding water testing. And I know at our last meeting, Michael, you brought up wanting to retest water, and I think as a board, we discussed during the drought, which, believe it or not, wasn't that long ago, that, you know, we didn't, it didn't make sense to water test until we got some water. And I think we've gotten some water, because we are actually coming out of that, not that we're not out of the drought, but we're further from it than we were back in the fall. So, with that, we know that that's a time when we, as a board, wanted to take another look at how the groundwater is being impacted by whatever is at the surface level going back downward. So, that being said, I think, you know, our, we wanted to see if it makes sense at this point for Matt to reach out and do further water testing of our, our buildings, to, to see if there's been any move in the needle in each of the buildings in our district. Does this seem like the perfect time? I mean, it does for me because of the rain we got even over the weekend, but, Michael?
Yeah. No, thank you for bringing the subject back up. I do appreciate it. I would say that it definitely would give a, a level to start at as it moves forward. Definitely does take some time to obviously, particularly through the water system, the groundwater and everything like that. I think that reviewing some of the numbers from last year that even the MVD has put out, there has been a tick-up with the snow and everything that we did last year. So, I think it would be a good starting point, maybe three months again later, kind of doing another one.
End of the summer type?
If it, if it keeps raining.
Are you, are you looking for, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are you looking for PFOAs only?
I don't think that we have to limit it, as I think it would be beneficial to, if there's other contaminants that we're getting, to kind of review those. I'm not sure if, I know that the NH, I'm sure the DEA provided a list of contaminants that reviewed. However, I guess the question would be if it's much more cost prohibitive to do all of them, then I think we might want to review it unless it's kind of easy to do them all at once.
Okay. So, you're talking perhaps end of summer? So, I can, to do the, to do the testing?
Do one now and then.
Do one now, then the end of summer?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me get with RPF, our, our testing agency, and see what their recommendations in addition to PFOAs would be. And if it's not too cost prohibitive, I'll, I'll, I'll go forward with it. If it is, I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
And I think we're all set on lead. We did that last year, made all the adjustments needed, so I wouldn't necessarily recommend that. The only other thing I would say is timelines. So, I know that there's talk about putting a filtration system on Wells 4 and 5. So, I would definitely want to make sure our next testing happens when that's already in place, because then we can see an impact that, that may have in, in the numbers that are coming, because I was arguing MVD water.
Next, the end of summer next?
Well, the end of the summer next. So, we want this one, just to see where the rainwater impacted. But then I think our next test, we want to make sure that the filtration systems of Wells 4 and 5 are online, to see if that may also have an impact on the numbers. Would you agree or disagree to that?
I would, I would say filtered water, obviously, into the overall water system is going to help. So, definitely would be a good gauge to see where that's at afterwards, too.
Right. And I think that's happening this summer, correct, from what I've heard?
I haven't been able to follow it close enough lately because of other commitments.
Yeah, I understand. So, we can reach out to the MVD, I'm sure, and get some, some just general updates on that. So, when we come back with the water results, maybe we can have an update from them on what they're doing on their end in response to PFOAs and filtration systems and everything else. Would that make sense? So, on that presentation night, we'll just, we'll get some further complimentary information, and we'll just take another good, you know, high, high-level review. Farina, Cinda?
I just wanted to thank you for your comment on that. I think it makes total sense to make sure that we at least have one of those readings after those, that filtration system is in, so that we know what's happening and what's coming to the school to get at least one of those plans. So, thanks for bringing that up.
Oh, sure, absolutely. So, are there any other comments, or do we feel like we have a plan in place to go forward?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. We're on to item number seven, which is school board committee assignments. In your, at your place tonight, I should say, not in your packets, were the school board committee assignments. And at our last meeting, I mentioned that if there's anything that you want to change, et cetera, based on, you know, schedules, based on interest, to let me know. I hadn't heard back, other than one where it became more of a, I think, a conflict in schedule. So, we made that one adjustment, but basically, the goal is status quo. If there's something that comes up, which makes it need to make an adjustment in assignments, we can do that as, on an ad hoc basis, if that makes sense to the board. And we'll just go status quo and let anyone in the district that needs to know where we, where we lie, know where to find us. So, we are good for 17, 18, unless otherwise stated. So, we're on to item number eight, which is the approval of school board minutes. We'll start with the April 17, 2017 minutes. I'd like to, is there anyone who'd like to make a motion? Cinda? And seconded by Andy. All, any adjustments to the minutes? Cut to the chase on that. Michael?
On line 179, I just wanted to be more clear that I think it's in regards to the, after the parents and teachers groups spoke, I, I think I, my overall point was not just about the budget, but also just it talked about the number of hours and stuff like that, that they also gave to the community. So, that can be noted also.
Is there anything else? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2000, April 18, 2017, non-public minutes. Moved by Andy, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Onto item number nine, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000 with Matt Chevannell.
Before you, this evening, you have a gift to the Merrimack School District, specifically the Merrimack High School Art Honor Society, from Fidelity, in the amount of $3,500 to support students pursuing a career of, pursuing a career in visual arts. That's been accepted by Ken Johnson and Shauna Gray, the art teacher, and a very generous donation by Fidelity for that purpose. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept? Naomi?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I move that we accept the very generous gift of $3,500 from Fidelity with our appreciation.
Is there a second? Seconded by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Onto item number 10, the consent agenda with Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Hugh, we have two items on consent tonight. The first is educator nominations. Matthew Givoni, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. Mallory Higgins, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. And Allison Spencer, library media specialist at Merrimack High School. In addition to that, we have the election of administrators.
Cinda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Onto item number 11, which is other. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Cinda?
I received correspondence from a parent with some questions and some concerns regarding the honors program and selection process at the high school.
Okay. Any other correspondence? I had two. I had one from a constituent that wanted information about when we will be presenting the findings of the dog in school, and when that agenda item is on our, on our calendar, we will, I will reach out to him to, to look into that. And then another from a constituent that had questions about the skate park and concerns that was closing the end of this June. So, following up and giving her the right resources she needs to get the information she's looking for. Any other correspondence to come before the board? Any comments from the board? Yes. Marjorie?
So, what I'm going to attempt to do is to try and give you a forecast of what you're going to experience at the next board meeting. I say it tentatively, because a lot of times things shift, but the next school that will be highlighted will be the upper elementary school. I'm very hopeful that we can have Jim Lucy at that time from Honeywell, because you remember, we didn't get to really thank him for the space camp, that he was really the one that is providing our two teachers to go to Huntsville in the space camp. We're going to have a wellness policy update, the homework committee. Mark will be giving a progress report. And I believe the board has asked, the board members asked a question about the lunch program and what we offer if a student doesn't have lunch money, and what we might do about that. And so, we'll cover those spaces on May 15.
Something to look forward to, pre-agenda, agenda. Are there any other comments from the board? Naomi?
This is a bit of an odd one, and I hesitated quite a bit before deciding to bring it up, but it's not so much correspondence, but over the last week, I've overheard or been a part online, watching a bunch of conversations that have to do with the skate park that was mentioned and the land that it is on. And I thought that although we've done it before, it might be worth reiterating some of the key points so that the viewers at home would have direct information that they may not have in other ways. So, I wondered if I could ask that those who have been a part of this for a while might give a brief recap of that situation.
Yeah. Go ahead, and Cinda?
Is that a question for right now, or is it something that might be appropriate for our next school board meeting?
I'd be happy to have it weighed, if, if that's the will of the, the committee at large.
Would you like to have a structured agenda item, or do you just want to kind of give a quick recap? It's up to you. With that, if, Andy, I feel like you're ready to decide.
Well, no, I, I mean, as some folk know, I tried to put a summary together about the, the steps of the skate park and the situation with the actual, the land lease with the land that's on O'Gara Drive. I think if we had it as an agenda topic to just cover the summary and, and the stats, we could do that, and I'm more than happy to lead that discussion, considering I've sort of threw my foot out there already. But, but I think it's important, as, as Naomi said, that everybody understands sort of the role of school in this, the role of the town in this, and how we got to the current situation where we are, and why we've, we've discussed what we have. So, I think if, if we put that as an agenda item, we can just do a summary of that and, and let, if there's anybody that, that wants to come to listen and ask questions, you know, through a public participation, we can do that, so.
Okay. Cinda?
Thank you, Naomi, for bringing that up, because I think it does make for a good agenda item. It was clear to me that there was a, quite a misunderstanding, I think, about our role in it, the history of it, and, and so on and so forth. And, and so I think being able to clear that and get that documented, and some of us have been following this for years and have a lot more history and background on it, whereas others do not, you know, nor, it would be very difficult, I think, even for the public, to track this when you're talking about something that's occurred over decades. So, I think that makes total sense.
And to that end, if I could just follow on, I think once we're done with our discussion, we can put just nothing, nothing like huge documentation, but I would say a timeline that might be accessible to the viewers on our website. So, it can just give the, the genesis to the, to the end of, of where this land lease agreement is. So, if that's agreeable as well, we can, we can try to formulate a document that would properly capture what we've been doing. Michael?
I'd, I'd like to also add that as a member of the, our representative from the school board to the Parks and Rec Committee, we are discussing and have been discussing where a new location might be for the skate park, the ice skating rink, and possibly the basketball court that's there. I personally went again this weekend to actually review the area. I, my first look at it, the basketball court actually needs repair. The tennis courts are obviously well beyond repair. Something else to take into consideration that the, the actual skateboard park ramps and everything do sink each year when it gets hot, and they actually do buckle the actual plastic that's on them, and they have to be, be replaced. So, this is a good opportunity that I feel that we can discuss at Parks and Rec. We haven't, but we could discuss, you know, building it possibly, possibly in a better way so that we're actually having to maintain the equipment as much. So, just a couple of things to actually also put out there when you, when you're reviewing everything. So, thank you.
And to that end, when I was on Parks and Rec, we used to do annual reviews of the land, and I would do the report on O'Gara every year. And I think it was probably four years ago was the last time we did a report on that, and it was the basketball court's in need of, in need of maintenance. So, so, you know, some things that we can, we can share at our next meeting. Cinda?
And one more thought before our next meeting might be to run the timeline by our friends at Town Council. You know, we're working very collaboratively with them on this, and I think it makes sense to make sure that we kind of have all of our facts straight and together, especially because of the span of years involved.
Absolutely. And I did reach out to Nancy Harrington, just based on that constituent's call to me last week, to make sure that, you know, she would be available to speak with that person and, and assist them in getting further information. So, we, we're already in communication.
Right. And we've been working very collaboratively with them through this whole process.
Absolutely.
I don't see any reason why that wouldn't continue. Thank you.
Of course, absolutely. So, I guess we're on to item number 12. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, we're on to item number 13, which is committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the board? Andy?
So, about, let's see, four hours ago, we had a SRS Board of Directors meeting. The, I am not yet prepared to speak of the results of the meeting around real estate and the SRS organization generally. There are some decisions that the, the Board of Directors did make that are being vetted and, and around the real estate especially. So, hopefully, in two weeks, we may have additional information, if not the first meeting in June. So, just a heads up that there are some things evolving in that space.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, first of the month that happens, it's usually light. We will go on to item number four, 14, which is, not four, we're not backtracking. Public comments on agenda items, and I will say that there is no public here, so I will close it. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Michael, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries 500. Thank you, and good night.